I call this meeting of the Washington County Board of Education to order, and I declare a quorum. This evening, we have Suzanne Mitchell, a fifth grader from Williamsport Elementary, who's going to lead us in the pledge. In following the pledge, we'll have a moment of silence. Suzanne?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Suzanne, welcome and thank you for being here this evening. We had a moment to chat before the start of the meeting, and I understand that you have some individuals with you this evening that you'd like to introduce.
I've brought my dad, who works at Williamsport Elementary, I mean, Williamsport High School, my mom, my grandmother, Mrs. Kunkel, and my principal, Dr. Palmer.
Welcome. Thank you for being here. Thank you for allowing Suzanne to be here to lead us in the pledge. And I know from talking with Mrs. Palmer that you recently received a very distinct honor. Is that right?
Yes.
Could you share with us what that is?
Yes, I had won the Carson Scholarship, which is a scholarship that you can earn for doing multiple humanitarian activities.
Fantastic. Congratulations. Congratulations. And is there anything that you would like to share with us this evening about your experience? I know you'll be moving on to middle school.
Yes.
In the fall. That has to be something you're looking forward to. Is there anything you'd like to share with us about your experiences in elementary school?
Well, it's just been a great elementary school, great teachers, and it's a great school.
That's good to hear. I bet you're a great student. You have to be if you're a Carson Scholar, right? Colleagues, do you have anything that you'd like to ask Mr. Stauffer?
What musical instrument do you play?
I play the French one and I play the piano.
I was gonna say, you have to play a musical instrument. Grandmother's a band director, father's a band director, grandfather's a band director. I just wondered.
Yes, Mrs. Harshman.
I would just like to tell you that I don't know what kind of student you are, but I would imagine with the mother you have, you have to be outstanding. I had her in school, and she was one of the best students I ever had.
Thank you.
Well, Suzanne, thank you so much again for being here this evening and for leading us in the pledge. All the best to you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, before we approve the agenda, I would like to recognize a guest we have who's here as part of the recognition of the Geography B winners, and that is our delegate Brett Wilson. Brett? And it looks as though we have another delegate here, Delegate Neil Parrott. There's anyone else I'm overlooking yet. Okay. All right, at this time, I'd like to move for approval, or I would like to seek approval of the agenda for this evening.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Is there any discussion of the agenda? Okay, all those in favor of the agenda? Seven to zero, and the student member concurs. Next is the approval of our minutes.
Madam President, I move that the minutes, make a motion that we approve the minutes from the closed session dated Tuesday, April the 4th, 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there any discussion of those minutes? Any corrections, additions? If not, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor? Three. Mr. Stauffer, where's your hand up?
Yes.
Okay, so we have three voting for approval, and I was here also, so I will be the fourth vote. So, four, and those who are voting no, or those who are abstaining?
Staying.
Okay, so we have three abstentions. Thank you. Mr. Stauffer, you have more for us?
I move for the approval of the business minutes from the Tuesday, April the 4th, 2017 meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Any discussion, any additions or corrections to those minutes? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approving that set of minutes? Two, three, four. And those abstaining?
You might want to explain the abstentions.
Three abstentions, yes. Our last meeting was one, that was an interesting one. We had a complement of board members for the closed session, and then we came out and, due to illness, I wasn't able to be at the business meeting, and so there were different people out here, so that's why the vote seemed so confused. So, we're all back this evening and all feeling well and ready to conduct the business. So, we'll move on to public comment, and we have no one signed up this evening in advance. Is there anyone out there who would like to come forward and address the board during our public comment portion of the meeting? This would be the time to do it. Okay, then we'll move along to our first agenda item, which is the interim superintendent's report. Dr. Michael.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, very pleased to present two groups of students. The first group is our Geography B winners here locally, and I'm gonna ask Kate Long to come forward and introduce them in just a moment. And also, following that presentation, Cody Pine, our content specialist for career in technology education, is also gonna introduce some of our robotics winners here recently that I think are off to nationals tomorrow in Louisville, Kentucky. So with that, I'd like to ask the board members, maybe we'll have Kate do a brief introduction, but we're gonna have the board members go down front. We're gonna do something a little bit different tonight. We're gonna introduce the students, they're gonna come forward, we'll shake their hands, we're gonna ask them to move off to the side, and then when all the, I think it's 21 Geography B winners are announced, we're gonna ask them to come back in front of the board and allow for pictures, and then we'll do our robotics team.
First and foremost, I would like to thank the members of the board and our superintendent, Dr. Michael, for allowing us to recognize the hard work of our students today. As you know, we're here to recognize the academic achievements of some of our finest students. In Washington County, students in grades four through eight participate in the National Geographic Bee. Tonight, we'll be recognizing the first-place winner for each of our elementary and middle schools, and we'd also like to extend our most sincere congratulations to the students that advanced to the State Geography Bee on March 31st. As each name is called, we'll ask that the students stand and come forward to shake the hands of our board members. We'll also ask that all students move to the side of the auditorium after recognition, and, as mentioned, we'll follow with a photograph. Following recognition of each of our students, we'll gather in the cafeteria here for light refreshments and the distribution of awards. Now on to this wonderful recognition. Students, if you would, please come up the side by the windows as your name is called. From Bestor Elementary School, Dayanara Jimenez Rodriguez. From Boonsborough Elementary School, Caroline Grubb. From Boonsborough Middle School, Connor Lawrence. From Cascade Elementary, Clayton McCracken. Clear Spring Elementary, congratulations to Lizzie Lawson. From Clear Spring Middle School, congratulations to Jack Weber.
Congratulations.
E. Russell Hicks Middle School, Frank Rodriguez, congratulations.
Good job.
From Eastern Elementary, Diana Morio Elvira. From Emma K. Daub, Henry Lewis. Fountain Rock Elementary, Hannah Brown. From Fountaindale Elementary, Duncan Wilson.
Good job.
Greenbrier Elementary, Sarah Ali. Our Hancock Elementary, Blaze McCarty. Hancock Middle, Casey M. Douglas. From Hickory Elementary, Tessa Lenezki. Jonathan Hager Elementary School, Isaiah Licarish. Lincolnshire Elementary, Corey Thomas. Morgansville Elementary, Adam Mustafa. Northern Middle School, Betsy Norgrad. From Old Forge Elementary, Zach Smith. Pangborn Elementary, Lorenzo Ramirez. From Paramount Elementary, Luke Frazee. From Pleasant Valley Elementary, J.J. Berg. Potomac Heights Elementary, Connor Davis.
Good job.
From Rockland Woods Elementary, Maggie McAndrew. Salem Avenue Elementary, Gabe Rodriguez. Sharpsburg Elementary, Carmen Saucer. Smithsburg Elementary, Bryce Reynolds. Smithsburg Middle School, Riley House. Springfield Middle School, Christopher Tenge. Western Heights Middle School, Cedric Wathiani. Williamsport Elementary, Elijah Gross. And from the Classic Convention Challenge Home School of Hagerstown, Patience Parrott. Congratulations to all of our students and our advancers to states. A special congratulations to Connor Lawrence, Casey Douglas, Maggie McAndrew, Christopher Tenge, Cedric Wathiani, Elijah Gross, and Patience Parrott. Thank you so much for recognizing the hard work of these students and parents. Thank you so much for your support and encouragement through the challenges of preparation and performance at both the school and the state bee. Students, please. You guys can come on up for a photo, and parents, we know this is what you're waiting on, if you'd like to take a photo as well.
Tall one's in the back. Including taller than us, good lord. How old are you? Fourteen, he's taller than Mike.
Board members, as close as you can get as well, please.
Oh, next job.
I'm shrinking.
I know. Easy peats. What's in the milk? Now you know what it's like to be a movie star.
A movie star?
The paparazzi.
Thank you again. If you would like to join us for cake and to receive your awards, we'll be heading out of the auditorium, and the whole way down the hallway, at the end of the hallway, you will take a right, and we'll be there to lead the way. Congratulations again, and thank you, parents and board members, for your support.
Yeah. Yes. I don't feel like I'm breaking the law. I know, I know, but.
What's that?
He'd made it so you can pass a car on the, you know when a car's turning left and you gotta go on the shoulder? It's actually illegal. It's not illegal anymore.
Even when there's a solid white line?
The cops can get, hey, the cops can get ya. One less reason they can get ya now, Karen.
Even when there's a solid white line? Because before, it wasn't. My mic's off.
It's okay.
My mic's off.
Oh.
My mic's off.
No, I know. Now it's not. He passed, he got a law passed. Yeah. Oh, man, look at this. Woo. Wow. Holy moly.
This is what this group of individuals has designed and engineered, and they are now taking this to the world competition in Louisville, Kentucky. You guys leave, what, 5:30 tomorrow morning? So, let's start. The VEX competition is presented by the Robotics Education and Competition Foundation. They task teams of students with designing and building a robot to play against other teams in a game-based challenge. What was the problem statement this year?
One of the biggest problems that we had was trying to figure out what would be most effective for the robot. So, for example, if we really start building on the claw, or do you like to do it right now? Okay. We started building on the claw. One of the most problems that we had was there was a lot of friction between the gears, resulting in a lot of popping, and that also subsequently hindered the strength of the claws. So if we tried to pick up some field elements, it wouldn't be able to grab and hold like you would with your hand. Like, I'm not, I wouldn't be able to just grab and hold this microphone. My hand would get weaker, the claw would get weaker. Okay.
They're like, well said.
What was the goal set? What was, what were you tasked to do? They said, you have to, what, pick up a ball? What did you have to do?
All right, so there's a fence 24 inches high, and there's two materials that we had to throw over, a star and a cube. And the goal of the game was just to grab the cube or grab the star, whatever you want, and just to throw it over the fence, but quickly and efficiently. But during that time, your opponent can throw it back. And so, at the end of the, let's say, round, they're gonna count how many stars and cubes are on your side, which count against you. And then, also, in the last 30 seconds of the game, you're, there's a pole in the corner of the field, which allows you to hang yourself off. So it should hang itself off, or actually, it will hang itself off 12 inches off the ground.
Wow. So, ladies and gentlemen, tonight, we have with us the Rebel Robotics Club, which is everyone. So if you're in the club, please stand up. This is our entire club, so if we can give them a round of applause. And this is our Team 90ADH, which are the world qualifiers. They won at the Sarah Heinz House VEX qualifier in December, the Volvo Group Trucks Qualifier in January, the West Shore VRC Starstruck Qualifier February, Delaney High School Crunch Time Qualifier February, the North Allegheny Second Annual VEX Robotic Competition in February, and then they were on to qualify for the Worlds in March at the Maryland State High School Championship. So, as I call your name, can I get you to help me? Will team members come up to receive your certificate? And we will start with Kent. Mary Ann?
I'm from north, but it's good, I'm still proud of you.
You guys hear me okay?
Nice job, you're very well spoken.
Cameron Han?
Good job, impressive.
And Dylan Johnson, if you guys don't go away. So again, can we give these young folks another round of applause, please?
Good job.
Our coach and mentor, Mr. Custer, to come up front as well. There has been a lot of weekend and after-school time invested into these robots, so, Mr. Custer, thank you for your time, and ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time, and parents as well. So if we can get everyone up front for a picture with the board, please, so all club members come on up.
Does the robot get a certificate?
Robots, robots can take the picture.
Yeah, oh yeah. There he goes. Congratulations, good job. Well, it's delicate, they don't want to ruin it for the competition. It's gotta save its energy. Is he riding a bus down there? How'd he get into Louisville? How you guys get into Louisville?
Oh, I drive.
Oh, like, on a bus or a bunch of cars?
No, it's a bucket bus.
Oh, wow.
I would want to take a school bus the whole way to Louisville.
Yeah, I got a coach.
Well, a coach, not a school bus.
Okay, why's the tall guy in front of me?
I said either, I'm shrinking and you kids are just...
Seriously. And his hair adds another two inches.
Yep.
Yeah, you're right. Sorry. Can the robot take the picture?
I'm afraid it hasn't got a plausible thumbs.
Oh, not next year.
Does the robot have a name?
It's a green machine.
Yep.
Oh, the green machine?
Yep.
Okay. I thought it might have been called Jake or something like that. Jake the robot or something.
Good job. I think we're good. That's it. Good job, everybody. Good job. Yeah. Have fun in Kentucky.
As a president, that concludes my comments for the moment. I have a few more comments a little later on the program. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Michael. I would say that ranks right up there at the top of the interim superintendent reports. Best, best time ever. Well, I hope those rebels get home and get to bed early so they can get up early tomorrow and do well at their competition. Okay, our next item on the agenda is old business, and there is none, so we'll move on to new business. First agenda item under new business is the first reading of proposed changes to the policy ADF, Wellness, Physical, and Nutritional Health. Mrs. Fisher? Mr. Trotta? Good evening.
Good evening, thank you very much. I wanted to provide you with some background information about the changes to this proposed policy, the wellness policy. The Maryland Department of Education informed local boards of education across the state that in light of changes in the federal law, that it was necessary for every local board to examine its current wellness policy and to make any necessary adjustments. The deadline for submitting the updates to the Maryland Department of Education is June 30th, 2017. The Policy Committee has, with the assistance of the Student Wellness Committee, undertaken a review of policy ADF. The Student Wellness Committee is composed of students, parents, healthcare professionals, a not-for-profit representative, teachers, and school administrators. Jeff Prue, who serves as the supervisor of food and nutrition, and Eric Michael, who serves as the supervisor of health and physical education, have coordinated the work of the Wellness Committee. The Wellness Committee offered a number of recommendations to the Policy Committee, and the Policy Committee, based upon its review of policy ADF and the recommendations offered by the Wellness Committee, is at this time offering the following recommendations to the Board of Education. The first recommendation is that certain word changes to the Purpose Clause and the background provisions of the policy. It is also being recommended that the term "smart snacks" in schools be defined. This is a term that's used in the federal legislation. This term describes the nutritional standards for school snacks that have been adopted by the U.S. Department of Education. The Policy Committee is also recommending that the term "school day" be defined in the updated policy. And finally, the Policy Committee is recommending that the administrative regulation that must be adopted by the superintendent address the following three topics. The first is guidelines for beverages that are available on the school campus during the school day should be addressed in the regulation. It is additionally being recommended that the regulations address foods and beverages that are available on the school campus during the school day for celebrations, incentives, and classroom snacks. And finally, there, the regulations should address the marketing that supports the smart snacks and school nutrition standards. I wanted to make the Board of Education aware that the Wellness Committee is currently in the process of reviewing the administrative regulation, and once they have completed their work, they will be offering recommendations to the superintendent for possible changes to the administrative regulation. The Policy Committee would like to thank the members of the Wellness Committee, Mr. Prue and Mr. Michael, for their support and guidance during this process, and I'm glad to respond to any questions that you might have about the proposed changes to the policy. Thank you.
I seek a motion for approval of the first reading of proposed changes to policy ADF.
Madam President, I move to approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy ADF entitled Wellness, Physical, and Nutritional Health.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Mrs. Fisher, if there's a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Discussion? Questions for Mr. Trotta? Mrs. Fisher, would you like to begin?
Um, I, I think Mr. Trotta did a very good job of explaining, um, the requirements and what changes we've made. I do also want to thank the Wellness Committee as well as Mr. Prue and Mr. Michael. They spent a great deal of time sitting in our Policy Committees here recently.
Any questions? Any further discussion? Okay. None, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approving this first reading of proposed changes to policy ADF, raise your right hand. Okay, seven to zero. I'm a student member, concurs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Thank you, Mr. Prue. Thank you, Mr. Michael. And we'll move on to the second portion of the interim superintendent's report. Dr. Michael?
Yeah, just a couple other items. I have a few announcements to make after our next presentation. But this time, I'd like to ask, uh, Dr. Mike Kehnich and Ford and Mr. Tony Burkhart. They can provide our annual update on professional development opportunities available to staff. So, Dr. Kehnich and Mr. Burkhart?
Good evening, Board President, Mrs. Williams, Vice President, Mr. Stauffer, Board Members, and Dr. Michael, of course. We truly appreciate this time to provide you an update on the current future professional development opportunities supported in WCPS. Our office is privileged to support and serve teachers with the supports listed from new teacher induction all the way to anytime, anywhere training and learning opportunities. It is our hope that by the end of this presentation, you will have a better understanding of the resources we provide to support teacher development in this rapidly changing era of public education. Today, we will actually cover these categories of professional learning. And we hope to explain to you to what each of them are and what their hopes are to accomplish. And then, of course, we'll field questions at the end, should you have any.
So thank you for letting us come and speak to you. I always enjoy coming in and speaking about new teacher induction. It is a passion of mine, and I love working with new teachers. Here are a couple of the quotes that I had collected from two new teachers who speak very highly, not only of Washington County, but also of the teachers, the staff, the administration, the county mentors, the superintendent, the Board of Education. They have wonderful things to say about you. And I'll just let you read those quotes right there. This slide right here, though, contains really what new teacher induction is all about. These are all of the prerequisites that we have and that we use with new teachers in order to help them grow, both professionally, and also help with student learning. Our New Teacher Academy, and I am so thankful that you come and participate in New Teacher Academy every year. We appreciate that. The new teachers appreciate that. It's only the beginning of what we do with new teacher induction. And in fact, this year, we have had a 70% to 80% attendance rate for all of our new teacher induction meetings, which take place monthly by the county mentors. We help them work with evaluation. We help them work on goals, reflective conversations, what does it mean to be a good teacher? And we also conducted a survey where 89% of our new teachers answered the survey. I conducted two focus groups and 10 personal interviews with new teachers to evaluate the program. And one of the main things that they said, 96% of the teachers said that they loved, that it had a significant impact on their teaching when they were engaging in learning-focused conversations during meetings with their county mentor. They also, 94% said they liked to work to achieve goals through reflection meetings and action steps for better teaching and student learning. And also, 94% said that the mentors, the county mentors, were able to provide varied resources for effective teaching and student learning. We do have some improvements that we've made this year since last year's survey. And one of the ones that we're most proud of was the Professional Learning Day. And what we did is we extended the time. Last year, we allowed teachers to go and visit another teacher in a classroom. It's very valuable as a teacher to go and see somebody else teach. This year, we allowed them to also spend either a half a day with an experienced teacher or a half a day with a content specialist, learning the curriculum, or a half a day working with the county mentor or the lead teacher. Sometimes we have some planning, and sometimes they, they talk about behavioral. It's anything that they wanted. And so they were able to choose. And that personalizes the learning of what a new teacher needs. Because we also have teachers who are new to the county but are not new teachers. So we've tried to personalize the learning as much as we can. And this increased from 65% from two years ago to an 80%, where teachers said very significant impact in what they do. Our target areas for improvement, we always have areas that we want to improve on. It always comes back to video feedback. As you can see, one of the components is video or audio, audio recording of a lesson and reflecting with a mentor. And a lot of people are very hesitant to do this. And I understand why. It is very difficult to watch yourself after you get over how much you look like your mother. Like, did you really wear that to school that day? After you get past that, then you truly get to see what students are doing. Are they learning in the classroom? What is your technique? How many people are engaged? And they're able to look at their craft, much, much like an athlete is, and really examine their teaching practices. We only did receive a 65%, so we do hope to increase that. And we have some techniques that we're gonna use from the Gates Foundation to help us with that. So, um, we also had a workshop on diffusing student behavior. And I wanted to mention this. Connie Hartman does this. We work very specifically with special education and also with the content specialists. It's very important for new teacher induction to be a part of everything that we do here in Washington County, that it's not seen as separate.
In addition to supporting the new teachers, we also chair and organize the Lead Teacher Professional Development. Specifically, this past year, we focused on the powerful practices. The Powerful Practices is a tool which aligns curriculum, instruction, assessment, and observation all together with coaching questions. It's a coaching model. If you attend our Lead Teacher Meetings, you'll see that they're framed with a consistent message. Consistently, we focused on a new curriculum. We focused on how the digital integration supports that curriculum. We focused on the collaborative planning process, which is the CFIP. And we also focused on personalized learning. Understanding that each of our coaches and each of our lead teachers are at different places, we allow them the opportunities to collaborate across schools so they can share the strengths and weaknesses and how to advance all teachers at all levels.
We have MSD courses for certification. This is for new teachers. This is for experienced teachers. This is for teachers who need any type of recertification credit. They must have six hours within the first five years and every five years after, unless they have a senior exemption. We have over 200 teachers earn between one and three credits. This is great for teachers because it is a free way to earn the credits. And if the learning is personalized and is useful, it really enhances your teaching practices. We have a variety of courses that we offer. Maryland State Department of Education requires teachers to take reading courses and also a special education course. So we offer those every year. And any teacher can sign up there or online so that teachers have the opportunity to work from home. And they do have face-to-face meetings, and our instructors are always accessible. We have been trying to think outside of the box a little bit. I work with some schools like North Hagerstown High School, E. Russell Hicks, Clear Spring Middle School, Morgansville Elementary School. What we've found is that teachers need to be able to personalize their learning. And in doing so, look at the specific students that are in the school and what are the issues of the school. And then they develop a practice. They develop professional learning. They look at artifacts of student learning. They implement teaching practices. And they're able to earn MSD credits for that.
Trying to support the personalized learning and anytime-anywhere learning, we've also developed a WCPS Anytime-Anywhere Learning Platform. This platform consists of, currently has three skills of the nine digital capacities that was recommended by the Digital Learning Plan. It also is aligned completely with the curriculum. So it requires curriculum implementation with those nine skills. Currently, as an office, we have framed out three of those nine skills, the three probably heaviest lifts that there are. Personalized learning, learning to build collaboration and platforms, and formative assessment. Those three are done now, and we anticipate that the other six will be done by the end of summer. The courses themselves are also offered online to staff for pay, or they can also do them at their anytime-anywhere. For the anytime-anywhere, it's basically self-select. You can choose it based on the skills you wish to attain. All the, all the videos are broken out with a syllabus. The syllabi includes specific skills that you wish to attire or acquire. And none of the videos, or most of the videos are less than five minutes. The courses that we have are anywhere in January from 1.5 hour to 2.5 hour. They take, they give you one month as a teacher to complete. You're enrolled in a Google Classroom. You have a virtual teacher that reaches out to you. And you use the training videos to create evidences of learning in which you submit through a Google Classroom. So far, we're very pleased. As we have just launched this in January, we've only had two enrollment sessions, one in January and one that started in March. And currently, over 205 teachers have enrolled in these courses. For us, that's a pretty good monumental step for just starting out of the gate, especially at a busy time of the year. However, we, our feedback has been very favorable in the fact that teachers like this opportunity to learn when they have the options and the opportunity to do so. You can see by the video, this is the number of views we have in our learning platform. Some of these would be through paid courses, but many, and I stress the word "many", of these hours are done or minutes are done through teachers doing it on their own time, just looking for specific guidance in a specific application, software, or a specific skill. All of the videos that were watched are created by WCPS teachers. The next team that we have going right now is, parallel to this, is a New Era Assessment Team. This team has been going all year long. This is 37 teachers from various levels, various schools. And what we're trying to do is help learn, help them learn the tools to do formative assessment. Understanding that formative assessment is one of the most difficult things to do as an educator, we've heard as, we've heard ever since I can remember teaching the word differentiation. We all say it. However, doing it is a whole different level. And it's a paradigm shift from what we currently do. But with the new technologies, you can actually do real-time differentiation. Our goal is to train as many staff as we can. We're doing a train-to-trainer model. Currently, we have 37 teachers that are using formative assessment very aggressively in the classrooms on a day-to-day basis in which they are adjusting instruction on the fly. These are at all levels as well. We hope to expand this next year.
For the summertime, we have over 100 curriculum content workshops for any teacher who wants to sign up. We have 15 Anywhere-Anytime Professional Learning. And we have seven MSD blended learning opportunities. We're very excited about the summer. We're excited about teachers being able to learn and reflect on their practice and learn more about the curriculum and also change the practices. We also have other learning opportunities that we wanted to mention. Our Twitter chat, and if you would like to join us, it's at 8 o'clock tonight.
We'll see you there.
We will see you there, online. Our Twitter chats are learning chats and leading chats, done by teachers, done by administrators. You can either just look at it and read everything. There are a lot of resources that we offer, that the facilitators offer. You can join in and ask a question. You can argue. You can say, "This is what I think", and all in 140 characters. So our Twitter chats have been ongoing since October, and they will continue until the end of May. We do have partnerships with many colleges at reduced rates for teachers. We work with them so that teachers can get a master's degree and either administrative degree and ongoing degrees. We also have some evaluation workshops that we have done in partnership with WCTA and the work that they do. We meet with them about SLOs. We have talked with them. They approved and worked with us on all of the evaluation tools in the last two years. So we're very proud of that partnership that we have with them.
So what are our next steps? We were very excited this past year to partner up with Human Resources. And we actually outfitted teachers with digital resources and the curriculum as they came in for their benefits meeting in July. That was the first time we've ever been able to do that. And we heard a lot of positive feedback from the new teachers that they were excited to get the tools and the instruments in their hands long before school started. We plan to do that as well this year in July and August. We plan to extend, expand new teacher learning opportunities. We plan to extend the MSD course offerings to include aspiring leaders. Dr. Michael has given a way. We're giving us a green light to move forward with offering a leadership pathway for teachers who want to become lead teachers and also for aspiring building administrators who wish to come out of the teaching ranks to become building administrators. So we have two leadership pathways for MSD courses that will be offered this summer and this fall. We hope to extend the Anytime-Anywhere Professional Learning Opportunities for planning with the essential curriculum in addition to building the other six skills. Dr. Michael has also given us an outline or challenge to open those up to the public, at least select ones, so that parents and students can have access to some of our training videos for things such as Google, the Google Suite and other things, iMac, iBook training or iPad training. So we're excited to offer that to parents as well for free. In addition to that, we are gonna implement a new frontline PDS system, which is a professional development management system. This has a lot of nice tools. And I'm not sure if Joni gets really excited about it. I'm scared to let her talk about it 'cause she'll keep you here all night. But it does even merge with our current evaluation system. So it even pre-populates, for example, in the teacher's evaluation, all the courses and the, that they've taken within our system. So they don't even have to recall those, write those down. Principals don't have to verify whether or not they attended. It's all verified right there on the spot, real time. In addition to that, we're gonna expand the standards-based grading and formative assessment as we talked about briefly with the need. We hope to break that to more schools, do more personalized training at schools on standards-based grading and specifically on formative assessment and how that works. And we plan to extend the Twitter chats to more school levels as we've seen more and more. For example, tonight's Twitter chat will be hosted by Mr. Oshauer and Mrs. Polling. The more we see school administrators hosting it, The more we see school administrators hosting it, the more we see their staff engage in it, and the more they engage in it, the better we are all served in that process, and we hope to extend it down to the school level. At this point, we will support any questions that you may have.
Colleagues, questions? Mrs. Fisher. Could board members access the anytime-anywhere professional learning?
Absolutely. Currently, it requires you just to have, you have to be signed in with your Google account, which I believe you all have a Google account, and we would be happy to help anybody with that, but you have to be signed in with Google, and then it automatically recognizes your Google account as a WCPS account, and you can go straight through. When we do open it up for the parents and students, it will be wide open. It would not require any type of Google sign-in.
How about the Google training?
The Google training's in those forms, so yes, you're right. Yes, absolutely.
We will get you there.
We will get you there.
Okay.
Absolutely.
How do we evaluate the connection between everything that you're doing here? And it's very good, and make sure it's translating into improved instruction?
Absolutely. The current works right now are, we're going to do, of course, some end-of-year surveys to all staff members to assess the digital learning plan, the implementation of the digital learnings, and our professional development model. That is all part of one survey, which we'll be taking to Dr. Michael soon for review. That's the initial steps to stepping in. In addition to the analytics, we do have analytics on every site. We do analytics on the videos. We do know how many people participate in them. In regards to transfer, though, the transfer comes out in the observations, evaluations, informal walkthroughs, and travel into the buildings to see that they're doing it. But I will say that we are having tremendous participation and tremendous enrollment, and I think that speaks volumes to the fact that we're on the right track in regards to the anytime-anywhere learning.
Can you talk more about, I know Google Drive and Google Docs. What's Smart Amp?
Okay, so Smart Amp is, for lack of better words, we often call it Google Classroom on steroids. So, Google Classroom has some limited features in which you can just, you post, you share some things in there. Smart Amp is actually a working virtual space. You can, if you would, Smart Amp would be this building, and I can create as many rooms within that building as I wish. I can create, for example, if all of you were in one Smart Amp classroom, which you automatically populate, Google Classroom populates the students in there. Once you're in there, I can then send work to some of you, each of you, or all of you. I can allow your screen to lock down on certain parts when I want you to only see what I'm showing you as a teacher, but then I can release you to go into the classrooms that I've created for you. In those classrooms, I can actually isolate work that you've created. So, if you create a shared document, say, a written report, I can actually see which each one of you, what words each one of you contributed and added. I can see the blogs or the communications you have within that, and you can also attach everything in there. It works and merges with everything. For example, it syncs harmoniously with YouTube or other applications. You can actually bring NearPod in, Showbee in. It actually works with other applications. So, it's literally a virtual classroom that brings all those other places, a place to work in one spot for teachers.
Wow, that sounds impressive. Thanks.
I would just like to say, Mike and Jenny, you can tell that you love your job. I mean, you're very passionate about this. This report's wonderful. And I think, I'd ask for some information today, and the numbers of new teacher hires are very impressive, and I think that's because of the work that you're doing, and I think that's going to show in the future, the work that you're producing now to get there, to meet those goals. And I really look forward to seeing what's going to happen out of your team, because it's just, it's wonderful. So, thank you for everything that you're doing and helping the teachers to succeed in their positions, and thank you.
Thank you so much. We do enjoy it, and they are great teachers.
You can see it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah. Thank you for a great presentation.
I want to thank Dr. Kohaneck and Ms. Burkhardt for the presentation this evening, also their hard work in pulling together all our professional development. We have a number of other teachers, content specialists, and others that have contributed to the anytime-anywhere learning opportunities. If you don't have a Google Classroom, Mrs. Fisher will make sure you get that far. Once you get that far, you can learn all about Google Classroom. And I'm really impressed in the team, not to just pick out one thing, there's so many things that we're doing well, I believe, with professional development. But these videos are really well-done. They're very simple. They're really easy to understand. I guess Kim and Katie, and particularly Kevin, have contributed a lot to the, you know, taking the simplest, may seem like the simplest of apps, but if you don't understand it at all, just gives you a starting point, gives you three or four minutes, and you play with that much, and you go to part two, and part three, and part four, and in a few minutes, you become an expert on these apps. The students are just using, I mean, just every classroom I walk into, it's not one app, it's not just Google Classroom. It is many different apps, and the students are just very, very proficient in using them. It's hard to keep up. About time you think you've heard of the last, most recent app, there'll be a new one tomorrow, or a dozen new ones tomorrow. And really impressed with our professional development, the willingness of our teachers to continue to learn, and what's happening in our classrooms. It's quite amazing.
Thank you.
Okay. Just a couple additional comments.
I did have an opportunity to visit 10 schools since our last meeting. Again, if you want to see our technology in action, just step into a classroom, almost any place you go, you're going to see, again, a wide variety of apps being used, a wide variety of learning opportunities being used with some of our technology, but also just great traditional instruction, and our students accomplishing great things. Last week, we did kick off our educational specifications for Sharpsburg Elementary. That's a process, the teachers meet, a large group of teachers and people from this office met with teachers from Sharpsburg, community members, and talked about what do we want to see in the new Sharpsburg Elementary? So, that process is underway. Their second meeting's tomorrow. They meet again in about a week and a half, and they're on the agenda here, I think, May 16th, to come forward to the board to present the ed specs for Sharpsburg Elementary. Had the opportunity this morning to attend a breakfast challenge meeting at Clear Spring Elementary. Clear Spring Elementary was our winner for the largest increase in breakfast program during a short period of time that the state was measuring things, and they increased their breakfast participation during that time period by 8%. They've actually grown from 50, 60 breakfasts to close to 90 to 100 breakfasts just this year. So, we're very pleased with that. And lastly, for the public, our next listening session's Clear Spring Middle School will be there April 25th at 6 o'clock in the cafeteria, and also Jonathan Hager Elementary Cafeteria on May 3rd, again at 6 o'clock. And just for the board members' information, we did schedule eight listening sessions for staff that I believe start next week. So, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Personnel action is our next agenda item. Dr. Pugh.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to request approval of the staff changes dated April 18th, 2017, discussed earlier today in closed session.
Is there a motion?
Got to move.
Thank you, Mr. Staffer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor of personnel actions presented this afternoon? Four, five, six. Opposed? That's all right. You were, yes, okay. Seven to zero? Seven to zero? Thank you. Brings us to board member committee reports. Would you like to start, Mr. Ridenhour?
HR has not met. We will not be meeting next week.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher? Yes, Policy Committee met on April the 11th. We approved the wellness policy that was passed on first read earlier this evening. We also continued work on the fundraising policies and their exhibits. And our next meeting is April 26th at 9:15. That's a tentative date. You probably have to look on board docs. I think that's going to end up being moved, probably to Thursday or Friday of that week, next week. Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mr. Gessford?
Thank you. Facilities will be meeting, our next meeting will be May the 2nd at 8:45 in the morning.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Mr. Bickford?
Finance Committee is meeting on next Tuesday, April 25th, at 8 o'clock in the finance conference room. We'll discuss, get an update on the implementation of the new accounting software, as well as get a status update on grants.
Thank you. Mrs. Harshman.
Curriculum instruction is not set for a meeting next week at this time, but if that occurs, we will have it posted on board docs. Otherwise, it will be in May.
Okay. Thank you. Legislative response team, Mrs. Cade. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize, Ms. Greenwald. I'm very sorry.
The Washington County Association of Student Councils did not meet during the month of April, but they did send about a dozen delegates to a state convention. It's focused on building leadership skills, and a huge part of the event is also networking with other student leaders. Delegates came from various high schools all around the state, as well as various middle schools, and that is also where we elect our state officers. We will be meeting in the month of May. We'll be meeting at Central Office on May 17th, and after that, General Assembly, as Dr. Michael had mentioned, probably about a month or so ago, Dr. Kohaneck, Mr. Root, and I will be hosting a digital learning plan evaluation for two students from each high school.
Great.
Great. Thank you. Mrs. Cade will be here next meeting, I believe, to give us an update on the legislative session and on, I think it's May 1st, whatever the first Monday is in May. I'll be attending the MAE legislative committee meeting, and I believe Mr. Trotta, I heard that you will also be in attendance. So, information will be coming in the next few weeks then with regard to all the things that happened in the legislative session. I will be attending as a representative to the MAE Resolutions Committee, a meeting in June, and there are continuing resolutions that appear in the MAE directory that each of you received. I think there's like 20 pages at the back of the book. And the committee asks each board to have their members take a look at those continuing resolutions to see if any need to be updated, revised, or if our board has any suggestions for additional resolutions, that's always a possibility. So, if you would please take a look at those continuing resolutions and let me know your thoughts so that I can communicate those when I attend the meeting in June. Anything else report-wise? Okay, that brings us to Miss Lanius Business, future agenda items. We have a list of future agenda items. I have mentioned that we have Mrs. Cade coming to do a legislative briefing on the legislative session, and also, at our next meeting, we'll be having an early learning update. There's a list of future agenda items in your packet. Is there anything that you would like to see on an upcoming agenda? Mr. Staffer and I would be happy to take that to our Agenda Planning Committee meeting. No? Not at this time, Mr. Bickford says. Take us to board member comments. Ms. Greenwald, how about if I start with you? That way, I won't forget you.
Thank you. With me here today is the next student member, Ibrahim Diallo, from North Hagerstown High School. If you guys have a couple of minutes after today's meeting, I would love to do introductions.
Welcome.
Thank you. Mrs. Harshman?
No comments today.
Mr. Bickford?
No comments.
No? Mr. Staffer?
Just a lot of end-of-year events coming up concerning the school system. Too many to mention that I'll be attending, so.
Mr. Gessford?
Well, along with a lot of great athletes and teams, like the robotics team, we do have a lot of talented people on stage coming this weekend. I think Barbara Ingram School has Seussical this weekend, and Williamsburg High School has Guys and Dolls this weekend. So, I'd encourage people to look up their favorite school on the website, find out what's musical that there's going to be playing, and please go out there and attend. It'll be a great evening for many, many people. So, congratulations. Break a leg to all the thespians out there, and we look forward to seeing you on stage.
Mrs. Fisher?
I have no comments tonight.
Nothing, Mr. Ridenhour? I have no comments. That brings us to the close of our meeting. We'll call this meeting adjourned.